Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Next item, please.
New business, item C, acceptance of donation from United Way to Register of Deeds.
Okay, Tanya Buckingham. Good morning and welcome to the commission meeting.
Good morning Chairman and Commissioners, I'm Tanya Buckingham, Registered Deeds. And I'm here this morning to ask that you accept and receive a donation from United Way. They are donating 2,700 blank ID cards to be used for our Military Discount Card Program. With me this morning is Gage Hunt, he's our program officer, and two representatives from United Way, Melissa Reeves and David Borboa are with the HMIS, which is the Homeless Management Information Systems. And I would love to give them an opportunity to come forward and say a few words about United Way, if they would like to come forward.
Sure. Good morning and welcome to the meeting.
Good morning. My name is Melissa Reeves, and this is David Borboa. As she mentioned, we work for United Way of the Plains, specifically in the HMIS Department, which is the Homeless Management Information System. It's the database that service providers here in Sedgwick County use to track the services being provided to the homeless population. And I just wanted to say that United Way of the Plains, we love to support our veterans. I know we have a couple veterans on the board. I know I've met Jim before at some veteran events. And so, when David and I found ourselves with 2,700 blank cards, I immediately thought of the fantastic program that Sedgwick County has with those discount cards. And so, I made a call over to Tanya's office and said, you know, could these be helpful? It turned out they were the exact cards that the county needed. And so, we were really, really happy that we were able to make that donation, and they're going to a really good cause.
Thank you, Melissa. David, do you have anything?
No. Thank you all for the service you provide to the community, and we are happy to be partners in any endeavor.
Just another example of a service and a nonprofit in our community stepping up and helping everybody. Commissioner Dennis.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you very much for what you do, for the donation. I have been very impressed with the Register of Deeds efforts in get IDs out to veterans that don't have any kind of an ID to prove that they're a veteran, because you can use it quite frequently. I know that Commissioner Howell and I both carry one of those ID cards. I am lucky enough to have number one on my ID card. But the service actually goes beyond that, because not only do they get an ID card, we also ask them if they have a DD214, and that's how we prove that they're a veteran. And then we put that DD214 on file here in Sedgwick County, so that if anyone ever needs access to that DD214, say the veteran is incapacitated or passes away, and their next of kin needs access to that DD214 and is available. Is it protected? Absolutely. You know, I can't go in and get Commissioner Howell's DD214. They won't let me have it. So, only the next of kin is able to access that. That was honestly one of my original concerns when I retired. I didn't file mine for 20 years, because I was kind of concerned with what happens. It's my ID number on my DD214 is my social security number. And I just didn't want that to be public knowledge. So, I want everybody to know that that it is safe and secure. And again, I think what our Register of Deeds office does is just fantastic. And thank you very much for helping them do that. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you. Thank you for that donation. I also just kind of wanted to mention my appreciation for your management of the HMIS system. I rode with the hot team on Monday for about six hours, and really had a chance to experience some folks who are unhomed right now. And that system across providers is so vital to caring for folks who are experiencing homelessness at this point in time in their lives. So, Melissa and David, I appreciate the work that you do there, and I'd love to sit down with you sometime, just to kind of chat about exactly how we can make that system able for folks to use it across the system, including our law enforcement. There are other folks around the country who have access, whose law enforcement, their hot teams have access to that. And so, I'd like to see about what we can do to make that happen here in town, because system communication is so vital for people to get out of homelessness. So, thank you for the donation to Tanya's fantastic program, and also thank you for your work at United Way.
Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to also say thank you. Appreciate Commissioner Dennis' comments. I agree with everything he said, but two other points I would say, I didn't even know that you could file a DD214. So, I held on to mine for nearly 20 years before I actually filed mine. And so, it's in safekeeping now. Had my house burned down or whatever, I would have probably lost that document. So, I am grateful to have that in safekeeping. But I appreciate, I guess, just knowing that that's the best thing to do with that DD214. But you also provide five certified copies. Is that still true? So, you provide five certified copies. So, if you have to do business that requires a DD214, they should work just fine. And on top of that, the ID card is really not just an ID card, it's also a discount card. And so, I use the discount card around town. People say, are you a veteran? I say, yeah. Take a look at my card. And they're like, oh, great, here's a discount. So, I appreciate that as well. And that recognition is always fun to experience. And people say, thank you for your service. And so, it creates pride and honor to our veterans. And so, I want to say thank you. It's a great program, and I'm so glad that you stood that up. And thank you for the donation today. It's very kind of you, very generous.
Yeah, and also, I just want to point out that we have a list of all the businesses that offer discounts to veterans. It's on our website, on the Cedric County website for Registered Deeds. One other thing, Commissioner Cruz, I know you had spoken about the Vietnam Moving Wall, and we're actually going to be set up there in their rec center in Valley Center. And we're going to do the cards and record DD214s there at the rec center, which...
You were a big talk last Monday when we had the conversation. They were really impressed. At another event you guys had, you filled up the whole room.
We did, yeah.
They're preparing for you.
Yeah, yeah. So, we're excited about that.
Great.
Okay, I don't see other comments. I'll make a motion to accept, acknowledge the donation, and authorize the chairman to sign a letter of appreciation. Motion in a second. Any other comments? Being done, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item D, consideration of a grant addendum for the Central Plains Area Agency on Aging, Senior Care Act Program Fiscal Year 2022 to request additional budget authority and expansion of staffing table.
Good morning, Annette.
Good morning Commissioners, Annette Graham. For you today, I bring the addendum for the Senior Care Act contract. It is a contract between Central Plains Area Agency on Aging and the Kansas Department on Aging and Disability Services. Each year, the K-Dads allocate Senior Care Act funding to the 11 area agencies on aging in Kansas. This funding is made up of federal and state dollars, and is used to provide case management, assessment, and in-home services to residents 60 and older living in Butler, Harvey, and Sedgwick Counties. The funding time period for this is July 1st, 2021, through June 30th, 2022. During this current legislative session, the legislators allocated an additional $3 million to the Senior Care Act budget after several years of advocacy for this important program that helps older adults who are appropriate for nursing home placement but choose to remain in the community with services. So, we are bringing this before you to ask for the additional budget authority. And with that, that is an additional $639,141 to our budget. And with that, we anticipating serving 100 additional customers during this fiscal year. Again, with that budget authority, there is a total of that dollar amount, the grant is $1,849,947. There is a required match of $66,827. That match is shared between the three counties based on the percentage of usage by each county, and we calculate that each year. So, the total sources of this is $1,916,774. We are also requesting the addition of four positions, four full-time positions to be added to our staffing table. That is a fiscal associate, grade 118, a case manager, 3, grade 121, a quality assurance specialist, grade 121, and a project coordinator, grade 126. So, I would, with that, request that you approve this and authorize signature. I did also want to just let you know that last year, during last fiscal year 2021, 289 individuals were served throughout this program during that 12-month period. Currently, we have on the program 206 individuals that were currently serving. And I would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. And this is an annual thing that we do?
Yes, it is.
Right. Okay. Any questions for Annette on this? Great explanation. I don't see any. With that, I'll make a motion to approve as presented. Motion in a second. Any other comments? Being done, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Motion carries. Thanks again, Annette, for all you do. Next item, please.
Item E, discussion of 2022 Cedric County Budget Motions.
Good morning Chairman and Commissioners, Tom Stoles County Manager's Office. Thank you for allowing us to try something new on the agenda this year regarding budget. As you all recall, the recommended budget was put out on July 14th to you and the public. Since that time, we have opened an online forum section for citizens to give input into that budget. I checked this morning, we had four online already. On August 5th, we had an evening public meeting. And today, we're a little past the midpoint on potential changes or tweaks you would like to see made to the budget, and we'd like to discuss that a little bit openly here. And then, of course, on August 25th is Budget Adoption Day, and also another public meeting on that day as well. Before we start with the discussion of this item, I'd like to bring Brent Shelton to the podium. During our public meeting on August 5th, we had one of our fire officials come to the podium and raise a number of issues regarding fire budget. But one of them was a $2 million IRB discussion that he put forth. And I'd like Brent to maybe further discuss that for clarity for the commission and the public as we go forward in this budget process. So, Brent.
Thank you, Tom. Good morning Chairman Meitzner and Commissioners. Again, for the record, I'm Brent Shelton, your Deputy CFO. And as the county manager mentioned in the public hearing last Thursday night, it was mentioned that $2 million in Sedgwick County Fire District taxes were exempt due to industrial revenue bonds. So, I'd like to take just a couple of minutes to briefly overview what industrial revenue bonds are at a very high level, and where that $2 million comes from, and then give you a little breakdown of that number. So, as you know, industrial revenue bonds are issued by local governments all across the country. They're a method to finance new investment and new job creation. And both of those things will enhance the community's economic prosperity. It's an incentive tool that's used throughout Sedgwick County by the cities in the county. And we offer it in a competitive environment. Basically, if we don't offer it, someone else will, and they'll capture that new investment and that job growth. Now, by policy and practice, as you know, before we offer any incentives, we want to make sure that the public benefits at least are even to or exceed the public cost of offering that incentive. And we also have in our policy that the incentive wouldn't occur, or that the development or that the investment wouldn't occur but for that incentive. Now, specifically to the $2 million that was referenced, I've got no quarrel with the number, because it was reported by the Division of Finance in our annual financial report last year. We're required by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board to report taxes that are forgone by economic development incentives or tax exemptions. That's been interpreted further by our auditors to include all property that's financed by industrial revenue bonds, whether or not they would be taxable otherwise. But what that does not provide in that number is the composition, the type of property that was financed by those companies and with those investments they made. And it does also not include any contractual payments that the county might receive on property that may be abated. So, let's break it down. As you know, about for about the last 15 years, commercial machinery and equipment has been exempt by state statute from taxation, regardless of how it's financed. If I'm a business owner, and I take money out of my cash reserves and buy commercial machinery and equipment, that is tax exempt. If I take money, borrow money from a bank and do the same thing, that's tax exempt. If I use an industrial revenue bond and the tax exemption is granted, it's still tax exempt. The industrial revenue bond and that tax exemption didn't make that property tax exempt. 1.2 million, or 60% of that $2 million that was discussed, was used as machinery and equipment. So, it's the number, that 1.2 million of that $2 million, wouldn't be taxable, but because of the requirements, it's reported in that number. And that leaves us about $800,000 in real property improvements, in exemptions for improvements to real property. That represent tax revenues that we will receive when that property goes back on the tax roll at the end of that exemption. It's for new investments that will generate new tax revenue at the end of the tax exemption period. The other thing that the number doesn't include are any fire service contracts. And in some cases, we've negotiated with companies for fire protection contracts. These exceed $600,000 annually. And those are used to partially offset the cost of offering that fire protection service prior to that property becoming taxable. So, if we break the number down, out of that $2 million, maybe a couple hundred thousand, that's actually forgone taxes that will eventually end up on the tax roll in the future. Went through a lot of numbers pretty quickly. If you have any questions, I will answer those. Otherwise, just trying to provide some clarity.
Yeah, no, thanks for peeling that back and explaining. IRBs can be complicated to understand.
Absolutely.
So, but thanks for explaining that. Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you. Have you guys talked to Casey or any of the firemen that were here to explain this a little bit more in depth with them yet?
Have not yet. I've been coordinating a meeting like that with Assistant County Manager Leeds. So, we're putting that together to confer that information.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thanks, Brent. I don't see any other questions.
Okay Commissioners, at this point, I think we open discussion, Chairman, for the commission to talk about, and this for the public. When we present the recommended budget on July 14th, we, I think I publicly say that's about a 98% done budget. There's clearly some edits and potential modifications the commission will want to make. And I think at this point, we would open the floor to see if there's any modifications. And also, for the public's sake, Commissioners receive information from constituents. They've spent the last two or three weeks poring over the budget. And so, I think since we're a little past midpoint now, maybe it's a good time to just kind of talk about things that we see maybe on the horizon.
Right. I think the commission's had, we've had a lot of dialogue and presentations about the budget, and we've had a chance to digest it. Do we want to have any other comments from you or...
No, Lindsay is here and Brent, so we're standing ready in Lorian.
Okay. Commissioners, you know, I think I mentioned last week something about a fire pay. I'll just kind of open that up. Again, we're not voting on anything today, I understand. So, this is our chance to reveal any things that you thought might be important adjustments in the budget. That was the only one I had. Anybody? Commissioner Dennis?
Well, I'll kick it off. As both Chairman and I mentioned during the public hearing, we're both concerned about the pay disparity between Wichita and Sedgwick County on the fire. And so, one of the things that I would hope that we could consider as we move forward with the budget discussions is, right now, we've got a 2% pay adjustment for the fire. As we move forward, that bill will put them further behind where Wichita is, as they got 3.7, something like that. So, what I would really like to see us do is, we do have the funding available, is to change that fire pay from a 2% to a 4% pay increase. Be willing, enjoy hearing what other folks had to say about this. Thank you.
Is there any other comments at this time? Nope. Okay. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. I do agree that the pay needs to be better for the fire folks. And I know we're looking at potentially going back to steps program there. That's something I think is ongoing discussion. But with regards to the 2% consideration this year, I'm not against it. But I would, I have talked with manager and a couple of others about establishing a hazard pay program for some frontline personnel. And I think this would be a great time for us to consider standing up a program that's designated to be hazard pay. There are some folks in the fire organization that are, their mission is to go into a burning building to save a life. Other folks in the organization are support staff. And I love them all, but there's a difference between those two positions. And I think that ought to be recognized in their pay. And so, again, not that I don't want everyone to get more pay, but I very much care about those folks that are going into the burning buildings to save a life. And I think that that hazard pay program would be very appropriate. So, not against the idea of 2%, but I would love to have a discussion about standing up a hazard pay program and potentially that's the same dollars this year, or maybe it's a program for next year. I don't know when the right time is to do that. But I do think that's a good example that whether we do it this, you know, in lieu of the 2% or in addition to the 2% in a future year, I think that's a discussion we can continue to have. But either way, I think additional pay is appropriate.
Commissioner Dennis.
Well, thank you. And let me respond to Commissioner Howell's comments. As I mentioned during our public discussion, I think step pay in the future is something that we need to take a look at. But I was not making it part of this, because we're going to pass this budget on the 25th. The day is the 11th. I am not ready to tell the staff to come up with a completely new pay plan between now and the 25th. I don't disagree that some kind of a hazardous pay for people that actually go into a burning building or go and respond to emergencies where they're on the front line is important. So, I do think that it's a discussion that we need to have in the future. As we discuss the steps program, we can roll in the hazardous duty pay. Again, I don't, I always want to talk about my background, but pilots received hazardous duty pay. If you go into a war situation, you received hazardous duty pay. When you come back out, you don't receive it anymore. I think that it's something that we probably ought to consider as we move forward. But again, we've got a lot of staffing to do on it. And I don't think today is the day to make a decision to move forward with that when we're going to pass this budget on the 25th. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Commissioners, have any other suggestions on adjusting the budget at this time that they'd like to bring up? Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. Actually, I have another, a number of other things I'd like to bring up. But in terms of the fire pay, there's one other thing I'd like to understand more deeply. And that is, just to say, there's a firefighter from another state that wants to become a Sedgwick County firefighter. What's the process by which they are provided, if you will, a rank and relevant tenure? So, how do they get inserted into our organization? I would like to know more about that. If you don't have an answer right now, that's fine. But I'd like to compare that with what happens across the street.
Rusty, do you have a, can we answer, or do we need chief here?
Brett, please. Good morning, Rusty Leeds, Assistant County Manager. Currently, there are departments that have a means by which to compensate experienced personnel coming from another agency upon entry. Right now, the fire department does not have a lateral transfer or a matrix built into their pay system in order to pay a incumbent firefighter from another agency at a higher rate. That's something that can be done fairly easily, working with HR and looking at their budget. But right now, we are hiring mainly entry-level firefighters.
So, just anecdotally, trying to understand this, it seems like the thought behind someone who would be willing to leave, if they're fairly low on our pay scale, and they go to the bottom of the organization someplace else, that might be something that they would be willing to do. But if someone is, has some tenure with Sedgwick County, and they're saying they're mid-scale salary, and they have to go to the bottom of someone else's organization, that would be less likely. I'm wondering about other organizations, if they insert them into their pay. They recognize their experience.
You're asking if...
You're inserting organizationally.
You're asking if other organizations will take our firefighters and...
Lateral transfers, essentially.
Yes, there are organizations that do that. As a matter of fact, we're losing firefighters to agencies that are doing that.
Does Wichita do that?
Yes, they do.
So, I think we need to talk about that, because we're talking about a retention challenge. And I think we're focused on base salary, but the reality is, we can't recruit people from those organizations, because we put them at the bottom. And likewise, we're willing, we can lose people, and they don't lose essentially their pay for experience. It's not recognized here, but it is recognized there. I think that is a disparity that needs to be addressed. And so, we're focused on base salary and, excuse me, and salary structure across the organization. That's a major factor. We need to be competitive on that as well. So, let's not miss this opportunity to fix that. If that would help us retain and recruit people, that needs to be discussed and fixed. I have some other items I'll bring up at some point, whenever it's an appropriate time, Chairman. Thank you.
Well, I think this discussion is ending. And so, if you want to bring up other items, or any Commissioners want to bring up other items? Okay. Commissioner Howell?
All right, Chairman. Let me just talk about a couple of other things I'm concerned about. So, I don't know how much Commissioners were involved in the discussion, but there's been a lot of pay analysis been done over the last few years. And HR has a very robust, comprehensive plan to fix a lot of pay issues across the entire county organization. So, I appreciate all the work that's been done, but there's a few things that I guess I'm surprised by. One of them deals with another elected office, and that is, and apparently, there's a plan to kind of reset individual pay as people swap out. But let me make a point here. All five Commissioners do the same work. Commissioner Lopez, you're here, the newest Commissioner, and I've been here the longest at this point. I don't think that we, on paper, should be paid differently. Any Commissioner can choose to take less salary if they want to. But in terms of what the county says the salary is, that is, should be, in my opinion, equivalent across the five districts. And so, let me talk about this. The Register of Deeds, the County Treasurer, and the County Clerk have been, they've had parity or equity across those three positions for probably 30 to 40 years. But suddenly, in this budget, because the person is changing out, we have a new County Treasurer coming in, the pay for that position has been reset. And I don't know that I agree with that. I think if we want to have a discussion about resetting, you know, things across the board, that's a discussion we can have. But in terms of just changing one of the positions to a lower salary, in my opinion, is somewhat disrespectful, and I don't really understand the thought behind it. So, I have a motion I would like to offer, not today, but when we do the budget adoption. Essentially, it's going to reestablish county salary parity between the County Treasurer and County Clerk and the County Register of Deeds. It would have the effect of increasing the salary that's currently in the budget proposal today that says $90,000, they would increase that to $94,743. That is essentially what the pay would have been when that person ran for that office. So, again, this is another one of those things, if we are going to change the salary, it should be done away from an election cycle. So, when someone ran for the office, they thought the salary would be whatever it was going to be. And then, once they've actually been, they won their election, or they've been selected, and I'm talking about the Election Commissioner in just a moment, same discussion. It's a bit of a bait and switch. And I don't think it's fair to those folks to not understand exactly what they're getting involved in terms of salary benefits before they make a choice to run. So, if we're going to make a change across these positions, we should do it not near an election cycle, or I should say, when someone has been selected and essentially seated and sworn in, and then they find out later on that the salary is thousands of dollars different than they had believed it would be. In this case, the County Treasurer doesn't take her position until October. But she was elected last November. So, this has been in the works for a while. But again, this is one of the things we discovered by looking at the budget book. So, again, I'll be making that motion on the 25th. I'd like to hear some discussion. But in addition to that, just likewise, again, we have a new County Election Commissioner that she was just sworn in by Secretary of State. I would tell you that I know our Election Commissioner makes much, much, much less than Johnson County. The election office over in Johnson County is substantially funded differently. The election office over in Johnson County is substantially funded differently and much higher than ours is. But it's a very important position. And again, there was a resetting of that salary back to 90,000. I think it should be back to what it was in 93-088. So I would like to make those motions at the time for the budget adoption. And the funding for these two changes would come from salary savings in those two offices. So there's money in the budget to do it. That's not the concern. The concern is what, how we treat the office. If we do want to make a change, it should be, it should happen away from election cycle or outside of the contract cycle. Open to discussion, and I have some other ideas as well, Chairman. Thank you.
Commissioner Dennis?
Very quickly, I do agree that all of the row offices ought to be paid exactly the same amount. And one other point that I got thinking of when Commissioner Howell was talking, when Brandy Bailey ran for this office, one of the things that you have to do is go over and get on the ballot. And to get on the ballot, you pay 1% of the salary to even be able to register. So she knew pretty well what the salary was because she paid 1% of it if she ran by paying rather than by going out and getting people to sign petitions. So I think that she was pretty obviously aware of exactly what the pay was at that point in time. That's my only comment. I'll listen to what else others have to say and go back to Commissioner Howell. Thank you.
Commissioner Cruz?
There was mention of some other funding stream that our treasurer would receive. Can we address that?
Lindsay can come up and do that, Commissioner.
And I'm not finished once she's done.
All right, good morning, Commissioner. It's Lindsay Poruso, your CFO. So I think I had heard about two conversations about that. One was potentially accessing other funds. The treasurer's office actually has oversight of funding in three funds. They have the normal general fund money that goes to support their tax operations. They have the auto license fund, which is based on tag office revenue and running those tag sites, which is obviously done on behalf of the state. And then they also have a technology fund that a small portion of every record that's filed goes to their office. The general fund obviously is set by the county commission. The auto license fund and the technology fund, though, are both under the purview of the county treasurer. That's not something that the commission can make a decision on with regard to how those funds are spent. And so we did actually, after that conversation occurred, confirm with legal that that would not be a viable option for us to look at, to fund that additional pay adjustment. There is some additional compensation that comes to the treasurer through the auto license fund, just based on sheer volume. But that's something that by state statute and case law, we're really not allowed to consider. And we wouldn't encourage the commission to consider as a part of the discussion.
Okay, thank you for bringing that up.
Sure.
I also met with Brandy. I think it would be sort of, what's the word I'm looking for? I think it's a little unfair that she expected one thing and then came into something when we set a new policy, knowing that how some of these seats are held for a very long time. So I would be supportive of making them all equal.
Commissioner Howell?
Thank you. You answered that question more fully. There actually was a Supreme Court case, I haven't got to the case, pardon me. Supreme Court, it's a Marshall County treasurer versus the Board of County Commissioners of Marshall County. Went to Supreme Court, and they ruled, and they said, I'm sorry. Thank you. So this is Supreme Court case, county treasurer in Marshall County versus the Board of County Commissioners of Marshall County. Supreme Court ruled in the favor of the treasurer. And it says, "When calculating the county treasurer's annual salary for fulfilling county responsibilities, the Board of County Commissioners may not consider the county treasurer's extra compensation provided in KSA 2008 sup 8-145B. Such consideration should, I'm sorry, would subvert the legislative intent to give the county treasurer the benefit of that additional compensation." So we really cannot essentially have any awareness of that other payment. It's really not for us to consider. And so with that in mind, again, going back to the history of 30, 40 years of Sedgwick County row offices, the deeds clerk and treasurer being paid equally. I don't know that this would be, again, we can certainly establish a new policy. But I don't, I don't think that you can do this between the time this person filed for office until they take the seat. I think it's just inappropriate. So again, I think there may be time for that conversation, but that's not, not to be done, I think, at this point in the budget cycle. It's just inappropriate. So thank you for the support. I have other items, Chairman, if you want me to continue.
Sure.
Okay, so there was a, I'm still kind of on the fence on this, but I do, I do believe, again, Commissioner Dennis made a comment half a year ago or so, and I'm still thinking about the comment that he made. And there was an idea that came up regarding EMS and EMT training program. And there was money inserted into this budget proposal of $185,502 that essentially will take people without any type of medical experience whatsoever and turn them into EMTs. And it also takes EMTs and converts them into paramedics. Now, for reference, a paramedic school is roughly two years. Someone might be able to accelerate that sum, but we know that it's a roughly two-year program. And they're certified by the state of Kansas. The Board of EMS gives them certification. So this is an outside training program that every other paramedic that we've had in Sedgwick County has, has done this on their own. And I am a little bit concerned about some fairness here. There are some folks that might take advantage of this program and it would be good for them. But there's other folks that basically missed out on this program. They've got student debt, for example. I would tell you, the reason that this program, I think, has been proposed has two purposes. Number one, it's about a pipeline concern. But let me argue that going back about two years ago, we didn't have a pipeline, a pipeline challenge in Sedgwick County. This is a problem that developed over the last couple of years. But as other EMS organizations in the country have had challenges recruiting staff, we've actually had people essentially fighting each other to get on our, on our organization. I anticipate with the changes we made in the last month in our organization, we're going to see a restoration of our pride and honor to be a Sedgwick County EMS, a paramedic or EMT. And I don't think we're going to, I don't, I don't think, I don't perceive we're going to have a staff shortage after a couple of years of getting the system back on its feet. And the system essentially has recovered from all we just went through. But having said that, this money is earmarked and committed to the EMS organization. And so the comment that Commissioner Dennis made was if we could give them some extra money in the salary, we ought to do that. I would do that right now, I think, essentially, to paraphrase what he said. I agree. So the question is, if we had $185,502 to, to deal with the recruitment and retention of our staff, how is the best way to use that, that money? My opinion right now, again, I could be, I could potentially change my opinion. But my opinion right now is to put that money into salary. And this is a, this is a long-term commitment. This training program, should it be stood up, would be from this point forevermore, as far as we know. It may be difficult to suspend that program once we started. And I do think that it has a little bit of mission creep. In other words, in the past, these folks have been able to get their training on the outside. And much like most organizations across Sedgwick County, if it requires education, most of that education is done in the private sector. If you're an engineer at Public Works, for example, you get your engineering degree by going to school. And you come in with that qualification to take that job. That's the way majority of skilled labor is in Sedgwick County. There's an exception to that. An exception to that would be our fire school and our LETC school. But let me argue, once again, if you have a 25-year person that's got that experience, right now, we don't seem to recognize that training and that background. We insert them back at the beginning of that, of that process. I don't think that's appropriate. I think that, again, I understand that you might have to come in and learn our computers and our radios and some of the Sedgwick County things that are unique and different than other places. But we should recognize their skill set and their experience that they bring with them. So having said that, across this country, there are, there are paramedic schools and EMS schools across this country. And the standard practices, these people, these folks get their training independently and they come in and we, we know that they get certified through the state and that qualifies them for these positions. The pay needs to be better. I think that's my focus, the pay needs to be better. And so I would like to take, I would like to make a motion on when we adopt the budget, not today, to convert that $185,502 to a salary adjustment. And there's two ways to do that. Since this money was already earmarked and committed, I don't have any problem making that commitment today, or should say, when we adopt the budget, to make that adjustment in their salary on day one, or should say, for the entire January 1st, 2022, going forward. There is some language here that said we could look at the long-term fiscal, financial forecast and support it, and support the additional costs if the evaluation shows that we can, we can afford it in the budget. So there is, there's a, we might look at the money, you know, in the future and say, we may or may not do this, depends on how we, how the budget performs. I don't know that I agree with that right now because we've already earmarked and committed the funds to EMS, essentially with the budget proposal that's in front of us. So just to take the very same commitment and convert that to salary, in my opinion, would be a much better way to use that money. And so again, I plan on making a motion on the 25th to adjust that program. By the way, anecdotally, one other thing as part of this is, the second reason why this was developed, this idea was developed was because it was stated that when a Sedgwick County EMT, for example, or even if someone, this is what currently working for us wants to go up a level in their career, they essentially have to quit Sedgwick County because the student schedules are incompatible with the X and O shifts that we currently require. And I have talked with Director Lanterman and I talked with you, Manager Stoltz, that I think that we need to be flexible and, again, encourage education. If education schedules conflict with Sedgwick County, we need, we have to do the best of our ability to flex around their schedule so that they can, they can go to school while being an employee of Sedgwick County. To me, that needs to be, needs to be embraced by the county. So that was part of the problem. And I think that simply we, as management, need to find a way to solve that problem more elegantly. So, but my focus right now is on the money. So with that, I'll stand for questions and comments. And I have others after that, Chairman.
Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. The money that is allocated for this program, how would it, would it go back? If it goes back in, we already have our, our plan, you know, our compensation plan. How, I mean, even if the money goes back in there, we have the compensation plan as far as how your longevity of service, how long, you know, what your level is. How would that really adjust that compensation plan, even if the money does go back?
I think that, and I'll let Lindsay come up and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it would be as simple as taking the employees currently there. That compensation plan is critical that we move forward with that because that elevates compensation to a more competitive level. I think it would be above and beyond that. This $185,000, we would infuse into salary pools and it would be above and beyond the reclassification.
So I guess my question, though, and what I've heard consistently from all staff members is equity across the organization. So this money is allocated toward this program, but when it goes back into the budget, it will be allocated across the whole county. Is that correct or no?
No, I think that this, this money is allocated to EMS for a grow-your-own program. So I think it would go to EMS employees only.
Okay.
Do you want to comment further on that?
So I guess my other question is, and I've just sent some messages to some paramedics to see kind of how they feel about it. So I guess I'd like to do some further research around, you know, how the folks that are currently-
Sure.
-in our, in our workforce right now feel about this. You know, it's kind of like, I like to, you know, I had to pay for my own college. I'm still paying for my college. And the idea that somebody else could have a leg up and they could come in and have that paid for to start working here. And then what's the other portion of that? If they do receive this, this funding and this help to receive their certifications, do they have to stay here for a certain period of time?
That's correct, yes.
So we're kind of insuring a workforce. And I'm saying all this because I want to understand how this is a bad thing, to get people to stay, to give them a leg up in what they're doing. That's kind of how I feel. And I just, I'd like to take a little bit more time, Commissioner Howell, to speak to some of the folks that are already here and see how they feel about it, knowing that they did essentially have to struggle, kind of, to get this job and then quit to receive their paramedic's license. So I think, I think that's important for me personally, to understand fully how it will affect the other folks in our organization.
And let me make a comment and then add on to that. First of all, Commissioner Cruz, if the commission will what happens to this $185,000. If you want it spread across the organization, the commission makes that decision. Today, it is earmarked in EMS. I didn't want to speak out of school saying you couldn't do that. But one, so there's two options. The commission could divert that money to anything they want, actually, whatever the body says. Or you could keep it in EMS, which I think is what Commissioner Howell brought up. Secondly, this whole grow-your-own concept, we didn't invent this. Aerospace does this, manufacturing does this. Currently, we simply tried to model a program after what others in various fields are doing. And that was the concept behind this. And the $185,000 comes up, but we were looking at six positions for grow-your-own, six into EMT and then six EMT into paramedic. So it's not a new concept. Industries, various industries are using this kind of model already. We were just simply trying to mirror that.
Thank you.
You can address that, Commissioner Howell, or I can ask some questions too.
Please, please continue, but I have some comments after Commissioner Cruz's comments as well.
Well, I'm a little confused. I would kind of agree with Commissioner Cruz that I, I need to kind of fully understand because I, I thought, I don't know, when it was, six months ago, eight months ago, we talked about EMS. And I, and Commissioner Howell, I thought you were kind of the leader in telling us that pay was not the problem. And you're very vehement about that. And now you're saying pay is the problem. Or one of, and then the other one was we, training was a big problem. And so we, we spent a lot of time coming up with this training theory of grow your own and things like that. And so that's where my mind was. But now here it is, X months later, it's kind of 180 degrees. Well, we don't need training and education anymore. We need throw it back into the, to the pay point. So I, I just need to, you may be right. I do agree that a person needs to not have to adjust their shift to get this education. I agree with that part. But I need to understand much further before I would be waiting to be on board. But we got a few weeks to learn it, so.
Well, that's why we're talking about it today. We have two weeks. And if I'd have done this on the 25th, I'm sure that we probably would have voted, it would have been voted down. So you guys have some time to understand it. Regarding my position, I have always said, it's not that pay couldn't be better. I think pay should be better. I've always said that. I've never said that pay was perfectly fine where it is. That's not what I said. I said that was not the reason that people were leaving. There was a toxic environment in the workplace which was causing the people to leave. That, that needs to be understood. It wasn't, pay was not the cited reason why people were leaving. We lost, I think, 96 people, roughly 18 to 20 months. I'm not sure exactly the timeframe. And the number one reason that people decided for leaving, they were very clear, it wasn't pay. But the asterisk to that was, we do think that pay should be better and we wish pay was better. And now we're talking about trying to recruit and retain employees. And since this money is earmarked to EMS, I don't want to divert it someplace else. I think that would be very disrespectful and inappropriate to do that. My opinion is that it should stay in the EMS organization. The question is, where do you get the biggest bang for the buck? Right now, manager, how many EMTs do we need today? How many are we down today?
EMTs are paramedics.
EMTs.
I think we're flush on EMTs.
So we don't need more EMTs today. How many paramedics do we need today?
21, I believe.
21, very good. By the way, I would tell you, I know there were some planned people to, to leave the organization. I believe that we've staved off, if you will, additional attrition that probably would have happened had we not made the changes over the last few weeks. But, so again, 21 is a better number than 23 or 25 or whatever it could have been. We lost, I believe, there was a few weeks back there, we lost multiple paramedics. I think, I remember one week vividly, we lost four paramedics in one week, two months ago. And so the idea we're going to backfill that type of attrition, those levels of attrition with a program that costs over two years, $400,000 or close to $400,000. attrition with a program that costs over two years, $400,000 or close to $400,000, to me, is not really solving the attrition problem. The attrition problem, we solved by changing some management structural, organizational structural things that had to be done. I think we did the right thing. Again, as I said before, going back several years ago, we didn't seem to have a pipeline problem at all. Now, the rest of the country may have, but there was a lot of pride to work at Sedgwick County. People, we actually are in textbooks because people said the best EMS organization in the entire country is Sedgwick County, or listed and shown in textbooks that this is the best. And people wanted to work here, there was a lot of pride. I don't know if we have to pay them to stay. When they have honor and high morale, they want to work here. And the pay should be appropriate, pay should be good. I want to pay them, pay them well for what they do. But this idea that we would put the money into a program to create more paramedics and we're losing four in one week, we potentially would get six after two years, that doesn't make sense to me. But I'll tell you what this would do, this $185 would probably give them close to a dollar per person per hour. And that would be enjoyed by everybody in the organization. It would, it would increase their morale and encourage them to stay. We see we're losing people, again, the argument, you guys might not, may not agree with my, my terminology of toxic and crisis and those types of terms. We said we're losing people to all, all kinds of places. And they'll, and the cited reason by many people outside the organization was that it was about pay or COVID or whatever. I'm just going to say, if you put a dollar per hour in their salary, you're not, you're going to see, that argument's going to go away mostly. So again, if you want to get the biggest bang for the buck, a dollar per hour is a pretty big deal. And I think right now, since this money is earmarked for EMS, that's the best way to use the money. We should, we should do that versus essentially a grow your own program, which I don't know that we would even have this issue two years from now. Thank you.
So Rusty, is the, the billboards from Oklahoma City paying $10,000 or $20,000 bonus, has that just ended because we made this change? It's still there. So there's still people advertising to recruit our people. Commissioner Dennis?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. How many do we have enrolled in the EMT and in the paramedic right now in this program that are currently enrolled?
Currently, none in the program. The commission hasn't authorized it yet. So we have no EMTs or paramedics enrolled in this program.
Okay. Well, the program was designed with a clawback so that we would recover the, the funding for that by guaranteeing that somebody is going to continue to work for us for a while. I supported the program when it first was discussed because I think that it's right to grow your own if we can do that. But I don't agree with it just canceling the program if we decide we're going to do that. I would not put the money back into the, just EMS. We can put it back into the entire organization because I read over and over in the Wichita Eagle, pay is not the program, pay is not the program. Every time that I'd pick up the newspaper, pay is not the problem, rather, is what I should have said. So adding that back in does not make any sense to me. That, I was hoping that we were going to help our folks grow and that was why I supported it. But since we don't have a pay problem, we can use that 186 a lot of places. So if we want to cancel the program, I will not support moving that money into just one program. Thank you.
Commissioner Cruz.
Tom and Rusty, where are we at with the EMS Advisory Council?
With Director Lanterman taking over just a couple of weeks ago, we had talked with him and we will work with him to stand that up. So we are in beginning phases of, and the employees have a lot of ideas on that as well, I've gotten several emails. We'll begin to flesh that out and determine who the appointees would be on that, how they will be appointed and what their role is. We'll be working on that over the next several weeks with, with the new interim director.
So given our time crunch with making this decision on the 25th, is there a way for us, I, I need to hear from them, and I'd love to hear from them in an open setting. If, if Commissioner Howe would be willing, you know, to help me set up another meeting like you did on the 24th of April, I think it's important for us to hear from our EMS professionals, how, you know, they've gone through this, they know exactly what it means and what it will mean. So I, I'd like to schedule that at the Extension Center pretty soon. I think if we can do it for another issue, I think that we should do it for this as well, and I think that it should be pretty fast. So if that, let's just hear it from them, how, how they'd like for this to be handled and, and help them, you know, hear their voices to, to make the best determination for this program and this, this money. I mean, that's what we've said we needed to do this whole time. How, how can we make that happen, Tom?
I know Director Lanterman is going to have a town hall meeting with his employees. I don't know if it's within the next two weeks, but Rusty and I will talk with him and maybe we could move that forward ahead of budget so that this discussion could be part of that.
Okay. I appreciate that.
Commissioner Howe?
Thank you, Chairman. So I, I agree with the comments just, just made a minute ago. I think whatever the EMS folks want is what I would like to support. I, I think there's two ways to do this. As I started this discussion today, I said I'm kind of on the fence. I'm trying to, I'm anticipating a change here. I'm not convinced it's the right change, but I think it's something we need to talk about, which is why I raised the topic today. I'm not completely committed to the idea. I have, I want to have that discussion, so I agree, Commissioner Cruz, that the conversation amongst the, the town hall ought to be the way to, to direct essentially how to, how to best use this, this money. If, if they, if the training program is, is what they would prefer and Director Lanterman would prefer that, then I would support that, okay? But I just want to make sure that we understand, in my opinion, this is, this, the reason this program came up primarily is because we were trying to put Band-Aids on the other problems. Now, it's interesting to me that Commissioner Dennis, again, six months ago, all but made a motion from the bench to, to increase pay. And is pay the problem? Was pay the problem? No, it wasn't the problem, but it is a problem. And so again, again, if we can enhance the pay of these folks, our money is earmarked and promised to them in this budget, and it, and it ends up in their salary, why is that not a good thing? I would support that if that's what, if that's the best thing we can do to retain and recruit employees, then that's what we should do. Is it, anyway, I, I don't, not to repeat myself, but I just think we need to be open to the idea that this money might be better used differently than this training program. That's all. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Don't see any other comments about that? Does anybody else have any other, yet another item?
Yeah. If you don't mind, just a couple of things I want to talk about. So three of the commissioners, I should say two of the, actually, three commissioners were not here back, I think it was in 20, I don't know if it was in 2017 or 2018, I'm not sure what year it was, but a few years ago, we discussed the senior center formulas, the aging, by the aging dollars that fund the senior centers. And I, I'll just tell you, maybe I'm alone on this, but I, I still reflect on, I think it's the 1982 ballot question. The elderly, elderly folks across the county were rallying for passing of this ballot question, and some of the folks that wanted to see smaller government were rallying, were rallying against it. But that was the debate that happened back in 1982. The ballot question actually passed, it was about a two to one margin. Sorry, my microphone was off. The ballot question in 1982 passed, I think with a two to one margin. And what it said was that these, the Board of County Commissioners shall levy a tax for service programs for the elderly up to one mil. And that first year, I think it was 1984, we actually put in about 0.8 something mils towards service programs for the elderly. Now, it's, it's interesting that when that passed, the city of Wichita defunded senior centers that they had previously funded. I think they, they thought that the county was providing the funding for them, so there was a shift in the revenue stream from the city to the county. I'm not sure that was intended at the time, but that's what, what did happen. Anyway, since then, we've been very, you look at the way we've handled this going since 1984, the number has gone up and, up and down numerous times. And right now, our number's around 0.4 something, 0.4, 0.4 mils in change. I would tell you that I have, I guess, two concerns about this. Number one, actually, I have three concerns. One, number one, we were, the way we're calculating the numbers, we're including some, some things at the, within the agent, agent administration that probably are, really don't belong in that calculation because they're not tied into service programs for the elderly. So that number, in my opinion, is, is not accurate. And so rather than, rather than simply appropriating a certain level of funding to programs and letting the agent advisory board figure out how to best use those dollars, we essentially determined politically over here what things we're going to support, which things we're not going to support, and we backwards calculate and mill levy equivalent. I don't think that's the way we should do it. That's my personal opinion. But that number has continued to go down, and now we're including things in that calculation that should not be included. So I would just tell you that I would like to make a, a request that we would shift the admin staff out of the aging tax fund for the calculation so that we do understand exactly what we're providing relevant to that ballot question. To me, that would be number, we should, we should do that as we adopt this budget. I understand by talking to Lindsey, I believe the number right now would be about 0.39, would be the number we would, we likely end up with. Second of all, since we suspended the funding formula on senior centers a few years ago, I would like to revisit that. Now, 2020 and 2021 because of COVID are outliers, but if you go back to 2019, there were a couple of senior centers, I believe, that had, had reached a threshold where they should have received additional funding, but we chose not to do that. So I would like to revisit that and potentially, I guess, use that funding formula to provide the funding based on performance measures of the senior centers. And then along with that, I know that we have some intent, I think that Nat would probably talk about, there's a, some money that would be, I guess, we could use some ARPA funds potentially to develop, if you will, a, a better membership program for the entire county. So we need to have a better idea of how many seniors are using each senior center or whatever, what services they're using. Right now, that's, that's kind of hidden because we don't actually have a, a countywide strategy for, for keeping track of who uses what. So to me, that, that's a, that's growing that system up just a little bit. So anyway, the three changes would be this. I would like to recalculate the mill levy equivalent based on filtering out things that don't belong in that fund. I'd like to revisit the funding formula for senior centers and, and fund them. I believe it probably would be $57,000, if I understand correctly. And then finally, I'd like to see the, the membership programs basically recreated by the county and provided to the senior centers. So that's several things I'd like to see happen there. I'll stand for questions, comments.
Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't disagree that we need to make sure that we fund senior services. I do think that we diverge a little bit on what that means. If you look at the total amount of funding that went into senior services in 2018, it was $10,228,826. The amount in 2021 is $13,262,735. So we, we are providing additional funding to senior services and I appreciate that. Now, as we talk about the funding that goes to senior centers, and that seems to be the big battle every single year, is what happens there. A couple of years ago, the county commission voted to eliminate the funding formula, and I think that that was a good idea. I voted in favor of eliminating the funding formula. Now, should we fund senior service, senior centers? Absolutely. One of the issues though is, is how do we do that? And again, and I've said it a number of times, when we compare what's happening in five districts, we have to compare apples to apples. We can't compare apples to oranges. We have to take a look at what's happening. So what is happening? Well, if you look at my district, and I'm, I have to advocate for my district. District three receives for senior service, senior centers, $85,000 out of the total funding for, for senior centers, it's 629,695. So my district receives 13% of the funding. Should we, if we're comparing the apples to apples, remember, we each have almost the exact same number. Granted, over the last 10 years, it's changed a little bit, but we, we're talking about people. And so if we compare apples to apples, I, I think that probably District three should receive more than 13% of the senior center funding. If we continue to, to talk about apples to apples, hold on, let me find the right piece of paper here. There it is, I'm sorry. Okay. Apples to apples. The population in each district, as I said, is approximately 100,000. Each district's a little bit different. District one is 105,731, based on the last information that we had. District two is 96,000. So there's a pretty big change there. District three is 104,000. District four is 109,000. And District five is 97,000. So, but then we need to take a look at what the population is over 65. How many of those are seniors? Well, if you look at the population over 65, District three has the largest number of people that are over 65. So if, if I've got the most people that are over 65, shouldn't I get a little bit more in my district than 13% of the total funding? We take a look, a lot of times, again, they, people like to compare apples to oranges when they do this. And so they say, well, your district is pretty rich. It's the second highest on assessed value. District one is the highest of $1,396 million. District two is $1,520,000. Well, that's kind of a misnomer because I have 454 square miles. District one has 118. So we're not comparing apples to oranges. So as a result, what you're seeing is I have the lowest value per square mile of $2,317,000. The next closest is District two with $4,496,000, and then it jumped all the way up to District one with 11,766,000. So again, don't start comparing apples to oranges, compare apples to apples. And I have a lot of citizens in my district, I have a lot of senior citizens in my district, but I'm receiving the fewest services. So that is where my concern is. I have to support my seniors. And so if we're going to take a look at something, and again, take a look, 454 square miles out there, and I only have a handful, one, two, three, four, four senior centers, they've got a long way to go in order to be able to find one. And when they get there, they find a little dinky thing. They don't find a Taj Mahal like you're going to find if you go down into Derby. You're, you're not even going to find a Model T if you go up into Bentley. You're going to find a Yugo. So that is my concern. I, I will continue to argue for my seniors. That's my job as, as a commissioner. I get criticized by active aging that I don't care. I do care. I care that they're, that the services are being provided by our county for the seniors that are in my district, and that's what I'll continue to fight for. So going back to a funding formula, sure, it'd be great for Derby because they're providing a lot of services. I can't provide a lot of services because I don't have anything to provide it with. That's what I'm asking for. So that's my argument. Thank you.
Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Commissioner Dennis, for giving us all of that information. I think this is kind of a tricky situation. My grandfather was a farmer and he lived in rural Clay Center his whole life. He didn't want to go to town. He stayed on his farm and tended to his cattle, his sheep. He tended to his life. We had to force him to move into town. Your district is very rural. How many people move to rural places to do just that, to be away from others? How many people are accustomed to having a farming lifestyle? Now, don't take me as 100%. Every single person is going to be like that because that, we obviously know that's not the case. But I don't know that you can compare each district and the geography in which we encompass as the same. I have a couple of senior centers in my district that are very, very vibrant. And then we have another senior center that maybe could possibly be reevaluated because of the way that people live and the way that people communicate with others. So I, I hear you. I hear what you're saying. I think that we've kind of had this sort of back and forth the whole time we've been on this commission. And so I, I hear what you're saying, but I just don't know that you can compare all districts when it comes to this population of of people as apples to apples, because it really isn't the case. You do have to understand income levels when it comes to senior citizens and their transportation services, their needs. And I just, I want us to take all those things into consideration. So could we reevaluate our aging department? Certainly. I think that that's a, I've been asking senior centers. How long have senior centers been senior centers? What kinds of things do they provide? Are they providing the services that seniors now want to be, want to do? So I guess, you know, the senior population is growing, and we don't see the same level of increase with service, with our, the resources being allocated to this population of people. So I do think that we should take a good, hard look at that. But I also think that we have to take a look at how our senior centers are designed, where they're located. Do they fit the right population of people that service them? Just for example, we have a lot of things happening in the North End. We have a great collaboration with the Evergreen community and La Familia. Is there a way to discuss how we can collaborate with those two entities for a better service? We know that intergenerational coordination of folks and collaboration with each other keeps people alive longer. Seniors have a lot to offer. So I think there's wisdom in garnering the wisdom of people that could utilize their services and their skill set to teach a younger generation of people. And so we, as a nation, we like to segment our populations. Seniors work with seniors. Children work with children. Why couldn't we co-mingle those types of populations? What could we learn from those populations that are, you know, that meet together every single day rather than putting seniors here and putting children here? So that's what I would kind of like to see. Commissioner Howell, I don't disagree that we have got to take a look at the total level of funding for our senior services, and I would be in support of totally taking a deep dive into that, because with a population that increases and the additional allocation of resources not increasing, I think there's a real problem. So I would like to consider that. Thank you, Chairman.
Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to reference a couple of points here. The $13 million that was referenced a minute ago, that number's actually, that number's actually gone up over the years, but we're talking about state and federal funding. Out of the $13 million, that includes the property tax that we're talking about with the mill levy equivalent. But it's, the total number is $13 million, but the majority of that that has gone up is state and federal funding through grants. Senior centers are one way that we deliver services. And there's a lot of folks that, they get exercise, transportation, they get to the doctor, they get nutrition programs, they have social, they can socialize with others, they get well checks, they have home checks. There's a lot of things that happen that helps our seniors stay safe in the community. And those services many times are provided through the senior centers. And so in terms of Derby being Taj Mahal, just to be clear, Derby provides about twice what we do, the city of Derby provides twice what we do to the Derby Senior Center. In fact, Derby Senior Center is at the maximum on that formula. They're not going to get another dollar. If we were to fund this, if we were to fund that formula, Derby doesn't get any additional funds. Mulvane might get some more funds, potentially, and Oaklawn might get some more funds. Let me just talk about Oaklawn for just a moment. In this budget, one mill generates about $5.5 million for Sedgwick County. And as you know, we have a target of 29.359 mills, so do the math. That's a lot of revenue that we have at our discretion. One mill in Oaklawn, I don't remember the exact number, but it's around $10,000 or $12,000. It's not very much money. Now, the senior center in Oaklawn has a huge population that has great needs. They're not inside the city of Wichita. They're an unincorporated community. And the community of Oaklawn has had so little money, they've actually had to use the improvement district funding to actually float the senior center because they don't have enough funding to make it work. And as a consequence, they've actually lost numerous directors back to back because they can't pay them enough to retain them. So they're struggling in Oaklawn, and they've been one of these senior centers that has hit the thresholds, the performance measures, according to the formula, that's due additional funds, but they can't get it because we're not willing to provide that funding. Going back to the ballot question once again, I tell you right now, lots of counties, I don't know if every county's passed a ballot question like that one, but we did pass one here in Sedgwick County. I think it's a moral, it's a moral issue to me that the voters have spoken. By the way, I will argue, if we don't want to fund this, that I think next year, we need to put the ballot question back to the people. And I know that Mike Papun's going to say, but you can't do a non-binding question. You can't do that. I don't want it to be non-binding. I want to make it binding. Let's clean this up. And I believe that the people will vote. Now, here's the thing, back in 1982, what's happened since then? I have numbers. Census is just about to come out, I think even tomorrow. Census data for county populations is due out tomorrow, I believe. I'm looking at census data. I'm talking, I'm looking at Jerry Mahill's data, WSU, and I plot those numbers out. Even our own budget book anticipates population growth in Sedgwick County by age. Our aging population, they're living longer, and it's, and there are more of them than ever before. And yet the dollars have been frozen, and in fact, with inflation, the dollars don't go as far as they used to go. So if anything, we're reducing the amount of services that can be provided through Sedgwick County funding, and yet the, the population that needs that help is a growing population. We just went to a WSU study because of this very topic. We debated this hotly a couple of years ago, and we did a WSU study. And what was the conclusion of Misty Bruckner's presentation just a couple of weeks ago? She said that there's no standard on how we fund these types of services across the state of Kansas, and there's no recommendations. Am I right, manager?
That's correct.
There was no conclusions from that study. That was not helpful. So we can, Commissioner Cruz, we can go through a deep dive once again, but this is getting to be a worn-out topic. What compels me to, what compels me as a conservative to say we should fund this is because of the ballot question. The people have spoken. If we don't believe that, let's put it back to the people and let them vote again. The binding question, Mr. Papun. Let's get this on next year's ballot. And I mean that. We need to get it back out to the people, because I think this should not be political. It's clearly political, and it shouldn't be. So with that, I will be making that motion on the 25th. You all can vote however you like. Thank you, Chairman.
Commissioner Dennis?
Just to go back to one of the comments that Commissioner Howell made is that those senior centers provide services, and I agree. I think that's fantastic. But again, when I got 450 square miles, and I've got one senior center in Bentley, one in Cheney, one in Mount Hope, and one in Orchard Park here in Wichita. How are they providing services to folks that are spread over 454 square miles? That's my problem. So until we can solve that issue so that, and especially when I have the majority of the seniors that are here in Sedgwick County, that's my only comment. Thank you.
Okay. My only quick observation is that we only have one other dedicated mill levy that's 100% dedicated. That's the WSU mill levy that was done when Wichita State was made a state school back in 1940, 50 something. That was obligation. I don't think we have another, do we have any other dedicated levy mills going to any other of the 42 departments in our?
We do have a few special revenue funds, so we have, WSU, though, obviously, is by statute. We have a highway fund. We have a bond and interest fund that only goes to debt service. And we have a, we did have EMS, noxious weeds, and com care, but those are all being consolidated into the general fund in this budget.
Okay. So the, I'm a little concerned about the flexibility. If we would dedicate 80 mill, which would technically double what we're doing today?
Yes, sir.
And then if, based on last year, when we had a crisis come up, call it a pandemic or another crisis, where we have to eliminate or close a couple of things temporarily, then that money would still be dedicated and would not be able to be used for helping solve a crisis, because it'd be specifically dedicated to a operation that may, may not even be, may be temporarily out of service or cut back drastically. So that's my only observation about dedicating in the other 42 departments that might want their own dedicated mill. We only got 29 mills to give out, so we don't have 42 mills, I don't think. Okay. Commissioner Howell?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just tell you, I think that, again, senior centers primarily provide services to people that have great needs. And I'll tell you, again, I'm considering the 454 square miles versus my 106. You're right, there are significant differences. I would argue that most of our mental health services are being consumed by people who live in the core of Wichita. Maybe I'm wrong, but I just assume that people who live centrally in Sedgwick County have the greatest use of those funds, probably. There are some things that, again, if you follow where the dollars come from or where the dollars go, it is interesting. I'll tell you that, Commissioner Dennis is correct that there's a huge difference in assessed value, and I mean to also make the point, there's also a huge difference in median income. In fact, one district, the median income is almost $65,000. Another district, the median income is $46,000. So the needs are different, and I will argue that the places in Sedgwick County that have smaller homes and ride public transportation, their education levels may be different, their needs from government may be different, and on it goes. I think there's, there is differences in the five districts, obviously. And the money comes from the more affluent districts, and it may be consumed in the most needy districts. That's just the way it works. If you really want to, if you really want to talk about dividing the budget, let's talk about public infrastructure. I have 106 square miles, but I guarantee I don't have nearly as many roads and bridges as Commissioner Dennis has. But we don't divide the budget and enjoy one-fifth of the budget in each district. We just don't do that. We put the money where it's best used, where the greatest needs are. And by the way, Derby's not going to get another dollar if we would fund this. It's potentially going to be Mulvane and Oaklawn, but there's a few other, a few other senior centers that might get some funding as well. I don't know why this is political. At the end of the day, let's talk about flexibility. There was one budget out there that was a static mill levy. That was the Sedgwick County Zoo. And I believe in, I believe it was 2001, the county commission chose to move away from a static mill levy, and we've gone to multi-year funding agreements. And by the way, the zoo has been defunded by the county commission. They've given up about $11 million that I can calculate. That's not counting the elephants, $5.3 million, or the entrance for $6 million. You take those two things out of consideration, the Sedgwick County Zoo, on operational funding agreements, has given up about $11 million because we moved away from a static mill levy. WSU has a 1.5 mill. Again, we could change that, by the way. We can make a vote and simply push that back over to the city. We've chosen not to do that. Yeah, we dedicate 1.5 mills, nearly $9 million, and there's no political discussion up here about whether we should or should not do that. And by the way, the city does not levy 1.5 mills, although they look at our budget, and because it's required of the city, they do, they do understand that money is being levied amongst Wichitaans and provided to WSU, and they're, they recognize that, that these, the Wichitaans are in fact funding WSU to about $7 million through the county budget. Having said that, it's not unprecedented that we have a static mill levy. And by the way, I'm not suggesting one mill. I don't think that's the right number, potentially. But I would tell you, if you come up with a static number, whatever that number would be, it grows with the economy. And I think we should use the agent advisory board to find out the biggest bang for the buck. So once, anyway, this idea of having a static mill levy for some part of Sedgwick County budget considerations is not completely foreign to Sedgwick County. Thank you.
Okay. Well, all right. So you've made your point on this, and I think we've discussed it. So any commissioners have anything else that they want to bring up for the budget? Commissioner Dennis?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I just have one other concern in the budget, and it's not an immediate concern. It's actually out, I think, in the 2025 timeframe. But there is one thing in the capital improvement plan for the future, and it's, right now, $623,968 to build a building somewhere in order to be able to store two reserve engines, one reserve tender, and two squads. Recently, I was out at Station 39. They had one of those reserve engines sitting in 39, and they still had an empty bay. If you go over to 31, we have two empty bays. I did send an email to the staff asking for an analysis of all of our buildings, including any building that we might have with EMS that could store a squad or a tender or an engine. I haven't received that information, but just from my own going to a couple of stations in my district, I can see that there is space immediately to store four vehicles just going to two stations. The fact that we have money in the budget to do this, I don't know that it's a valid justification for building a building. If we've got money in the budget and we don't need, let's cut the mill levy for fire and give the money back to the, to the people that are paying the taxes. In addition, if you look at this program, it says the location is to be determined. So we don't have money in the budget to buy land in order to be able to put this on. So that, we don't even know if 623,000 is going to come close to it. Then if you look at the program in the budget book, why it says, oh, there's no other expenses, it might cost us a little bit in order to be able to heat it. Well, there are other expenses. We're going to have to pay insurance on this thing. We're going to have to maintain this thing. We're going to have to be able to pay utilities on it. So I don't think we've even touched what it's really going to cost to do this, and we don't have a good concept of why we even need it. We got money in the budget, let's spend it. Well, that's a really, really poor reason to spend money. So I'm going to have a motion that we move this out of the CIP and into the watch list so that if something comes up later on that does make it important, we can take a look at it again. But until somebody can justify it to me, I think it needs to be on the watch list rather than the CIP. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. First, I just want to say I, I'm thankful of how we're approaching the budget this year. Having this discussion today allows for a more deep dive into things that we've discussed rather than having a spreadsheet up here adjusting all of our budget on the 25th, the day we adopt. So I just want to say thank you for changing it up this year and having this discussion prior to adoption day so that we have more time to look into these motions that commissioners will be making. I just have a few things I wanted to talk about. We had some emails flying around last week from our director of com care, Joan Tammany, who is very concerned for the staffing in her department. It is vital and absolutely necessary that we do something to help her department out. I don't see anything in this budget other than the compensation plan, but when you're 200 positions short, we need to find people. We need to support staff who are, who are there and do whatever we can to retain the folks that are providing these services. So I think we need some immediate action. I don't know that we can wait for 2022 for this department in particular, so I wanted to bring this up now because we can't provide services to a community if we don't have anybody to do it. So Tom, I know you weren't prepared to discuss this, so I'm sorry, I just am kind of springing it on you, but do we have a plan?
Sure. Commissioner, a couple of things. First of all, when you're talking about staffing, whether it's EMS, fire, com care corrections, the jail, you always break it into two discussions. How do we retain what we have, and how do you recruit to fill openings? How do we retain what we have, and how do you recruit to fill openings? This discussion's going on across the country with workforce shortages. So to focus on calm care, there's, we have to, let's look at retention of calm care first, not even talk about recruitment. To retain, what we have done to date is put caseworkers and therapists into critical pay status, which gave them an immediate 10% bump. As the manager had authority to do that, I made commissioner aware, commissioners aware I was going to do that, and we did that a few weeks ago. What we're seeing, and the recent emails you're referring to with Joan Tammany, is the market is shifting literally as we speak, and other entities are offering and paying therapists and caseworkers substantially more than what Central County's current pay plan is allowing us to pay. So the actions we can take to retain would be to increase critical pay more. And critical pay, whenever we designate it, we always have to make known to employees that it's temporary until the criticalness is gone, and then it goes away. So we are having staff discussion right now and increasing that critical pay. And I'll use an example that there are school districts hiring therapists for a $56,000 wage, and our current wage, even with critical pay, is $44,000. So there's a $13,000 gap there that is too much for an employee to take a look at and not be tempted by that. So we have to artificially adjust that $44,000 to something higher and closer to $57,000 strategically to maintain retention. So we do that through critical pay. We do that through other mechanisms that the commission will allow us to do to get that gap more close. Now, even when we reclassify on January 1, the therapist pay goes to $49,000, starting pay. So we still have an $8,000 gap between what the market has shifted this recently to pay and what we're able to pay. So we have to take a look at shoring that gap as well. So one thing that the commission, and we had talked about this a few weeks ago, one thing the commission could consider, if budget allows and our finances allow, is to move forward with that reclassification model at the start of fourth quarter, also another October 1, for calm care positions. We can move that reclassification system, accelerate it forward to October 1, so that would take effect. That would help. I don't know whether it gets us there for retention. So we're looking currently, HR, calm care, and finance and I are looking at strategies to retain, and it's going to be multifaceted. Some of them, in the email that I sent to you, I kind of expressed what we were considering. Recruitment, now, into a conversation we had earlier, if you can bump pay up, it helps you recruit. But we're going to have to consider, as a county, what other businesses in this country are doing as far as signing bonuses. And we'll present a template model to you at next week's meeting to talk about signing bonuses, which will help us get people in the door. But you have to focus on both these things, getting people in the door and retaining what you have. So we're formulating a plan. We think we have a plan, but it's going to require commission support. It's outside of my authority as a manager to do this. We'll have to bring things before the commission, talk about it at a public bench, and have you approve it.
Okay. Well, I think we got to do something quick, and it sounds like you have a plan in place. I just hope it's enough. Okay, so switching gears for a second, I just have one more thing. Back in 2018, Project Wichita held a survey with community members. They focused on a 10-year regional plan, 239 focus groups, 14,000 participants. The areas of focus and action plans identified were talent, lifelong learning, economic prosperity, strong communities and neighborhoods, and quality of place. Now, when we talk about quality of place, we are talking about a culture of celebrating community and signature events and attractions across the region. Well, we have a gym right on our campus here called the Kansas African American Museum. They are making significant movements toward a more visible location. I think we have all been talking about this for a very long time. And they have approached each one of the commissioners. They were here on August 5 at our open meeting, both Denise Sherman and Ted Ayers. And so, come the 25th, I will be making a motion to put in the budget their request. I believe this sets us up for the future. This sets us up for not only today, but when we talk 20, 30 years in the future. This is the Kansas African American Museum here in Wichita, Kansas. So not only are we celebrating the history of the African American experience here, but we're reaching out to everyone across the state. So I just want to make you all aware that I will be making that motion as a part of this consideration for the budget, and I hope that you will support. Thank you, Chairman. That's it.
Got it. Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you. I just had a couple of things when we're talking about compensation. I've been hearing lately a lot about our, like Lynda's groups and corrections, especially after we were able to pay, do raises at the sheriff's department, that they are having a really hard time retaining, as well as, you know, bringing in new people, because it's the same problem there as, you know, so many other places. But they're just not, I mean, they're paying, being paid significantly less even than the sheriff. So the sheriff's department is taking some of our corrections officers as well. And so I would really like to look at what we can do there, because that's a critical piece of this county, and we need to make sure that we're able to provide those services. And I also just had a question about that SMART campus. So we just met with
Greaton Wichita.
Greaton, yeah, sorry. I don't know why I can't think of it. But so is that going to be on this budget? Or, I mean, where is that money that they're asking? Is that coming from our budget this year? Because they said it would be something quick, so it wouldn't be next year. So how does that fit into this if it's not there now?
The $150,000 request from GWP on behalf of Deloitte and that project is, I think commissioners are chewing on that. Now, that's $20,21 out of an economic development line item or contingency budget of some sort. I don't know that we have, I don't know, we have a good, firm idea of what that, what the deliverable is going to be on that. So we're still discussing that, but that would be $20,21.
So that's not going to be on this at all?
Correct.
And I think, if I can just interrupt, I think there's a bucket of money that we don't know in the economic development each year, that we never know what pops up with a incentive that may be a participating part of it, maybe small, whatever. So
And the only other thing I'd add is, we're still looking if that would be ARPA-eligible as well, that kind of expense. So we're still
But, right, so it's not in this budget.
Okay, yeah. That's what I wanted to make sure, because I didn't see that. Okay, all right. That's all I had. Thank you.
Okay. Don't know who was first. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As regards to Commissioner Cruz, ever since I've been on the commission, I've been working with the Kansas African American Museum, trying to find out what we can do to help them in the future. It started one day, right after I was, became a commissioner, and I was walking around, and I tried to get into Kansas African American Museum, and I couldn't because it was locked up. Luckily, Mark McCormick was coming up, and he opened the doors, and I got a, that was my first tour of the facility. And so he and I started talking about what we could do, what is their future? And we got caught ways down the line, and then Mark unfortunately left Wichita area to move on to other pastures. But they got a great leader now with Denise Sherman, and she's come and talked with us a number of times. I guess my only question I have of Commissioner Cruz, they presented two different options. They need $450,000, but they offered to let us pay that over five years. And I think that that would be a little more palatable in our budget as we move forward. So she didn't indicate which direction she was going on, how we were going to pay for that. So that would be my only question. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure. That's precisely the plan. You know, making it easy on the budget, knowing that that is a pretty significant chunk of change, but one that I believe, you know, when you talk about activation of gathering spots within the region, when you talk about attractions, when you talk about the quality of place, that we are all, we've all been talking about that. So how can we make this happen? And if that's, I believe, and I am in agreeance with you, that will be the motion that I will make.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So that was actually one of my questions as well. And let me just say, we have been good partners with the African American Museum for many, many years. And I think considering Wichita's history and Kansas' history, I think this is an important part of the county culture and rec. It's in our budget. We provided, I think, last year, $172,472 for the museum, and we've done that for a number of years. And so we've had a good partnership with them. But one thing about this, that this would solve, what the money is for, is essentially they have a better location, and the location is very important. One of the reasons they have, I think the hours are, is the number of operation hours are set the way they are, and number of visitors is less than we would like, is because of the really bad location. It is situated between the parking garage, the county courthouse, and the Central County Jail. That is really not a good location for lots of reasons. Their new location is going to be basically in the heart of downtown. And I believe that that's going to do tremendous to bring people in and help them learn about the history, to make sure that we accomplish the mission of the museum. It actually becomes effective because of the location. So I think this is a reasonable request, and I would like to show some support to that. I would just say, there's two ways of doing this. Number, one way, we can do this in the budget. Of course, they wouldn't access the funds until next year, and of course, the four years following. The other way we could do this, potentially, we'd be looking at the end-of-year, end-of-2021 budget. And every year I've been here, we have taken the end-of-year budget performance, and we look at, there's some unspent dollars because we had a very good budget performance through the year. We find there's a little bit of money here or there that we could do some things that are very desirable to Central County staff or commissioners or whatever. There's things that pop up, that things we can do, that we basically didn't fund in the budget, but there's things we can do that way. So that might be another thing we ought to consider, maybe at the end of this year, whether we want to just do the five years or do something that would access those funds differently in this regard. I think, from my memory, the largest thing we considered in that process was a $200,000 grant to the B29 Museum out at the airport, the dock hangar. That was done, I think, about five years ago now. And so that was something that County Commission chose to do at the end of the year, using those unspent funds. Let me just throw out there, though, if we are going to support the TCAM, and again, the reason I want to do this is multifaceted, but I do think we've been good partners with them over the years. Let me just reiterate, we've been good partners with KPTS over the years as well. And KPTS, just much like the African American Museum, has come back and said that we have a one-time request to change locations. They've been in that building, I forget the number of years, but basically, my entire life, have been in a location that has not been great for them. They're space limited. They can't do the productions they would like to do. And they have an opportunity to, in fact, I already know, they already closed on the building, but there's, trying to find a way to make it work hasn't been their challenge. And so they have a request to the county for one-time spending to pay for that, and it's $100,000. And I would be, I would be interested in seeing that done, much the same way that TCAM has been funded, whether it be through the budget or through end-of-year spending. I think that we ought to have that discussion, assuming that there's funds available. I'd like to see the County Commission consider those funds for that use at the end of this year. And if there's a desire, I don't mind doing it through the budget process for the 202 budget. But either way, I think there probably is funds available for these two things. If you use end-of-year funds, it actually gets them the money a little bit quicker. So I guess I'd like to hear the other commissioners' discussion on KPTS. Thank you.
Okay. I think we all understand what KTPS was asking for, but I don't see any questions, any other, any other comments about the budget. If not, I want to make a motion to receive and file the discussion. Okay, motion and a second. Any other comments? Being done, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Next item, please.
Item F, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, Regular Meeting on August 5, 2021.
Good morning, Commissioners, Chairman and Commissioners. Josh Lauber, Senior Buyer with the Purchasing Department. The meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts held on August 5, 2021 resulted in three items for your consideration. Item number one, Road Improvements, R175-R2 Contractor-Install Pavement Marking for Public Works. The recommendation is to accept the bid from Traffic Control Services Incorporated in the amount of $230,687.80. Item number two, Liquidated Calcium Chloride, 32% for Public Works. The recommendation is to accept the bid from Scottwood Industries LLC, and establish contracted rates as listed above for two years, with three one-year options to renew. And finally, item number three, Data Application and Integration Solutions for the Early Years Daisy System. The recommendation is to accept the five-year quote from the University of Kansas Center for Public Partnerships and Research, and establish contracted rates as listed above for a total amount of $165,590. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval of the three items.
Okay. Thank you, Josh. Does any, Commissioner have any questions about the Board of Bids? And I don't see anything, so I'll make a motion that we accept the Board of Bids as proposed. Motion and a second. Being no comments, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Good morning again, Commissioners, Chairman, Tom Stills, County Manager's Office, recommending approval of consent items G through L this morning.
Does anybody, any of the commissioners have any items to pull for discussion on items G through L? I don't see any. I'll make a motion to approve. And a motion and a second. Any other comments? Being done, Madam, or Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye. Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Legislative Issues.
Hello, Akeem.
Hello. Good afternoon, Chairman. No update, however. We will start to talk to Jason Watkins, and continue to talk to Councilor Papoon on the legislative agenda that we're going to eventually present to you. We will start a little bit earlier, like we did last year. Have been taking notes over the last couple of months of items that you guys, commissioners, have mentioned, and so we'll bring that to you at some point here in the near future. But that's all the update I have, sir.
Okay. Any questions for Akeem about legislative issues? I don't think so? Okay. So, well, we don't even have a motion on that. So, Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Committee Reports.
Commissioners, do you have anything to report? And I just want to remind, I will report that the state is doing a redistricting meeting this afternoon at 1:30 at the Metroplex. So if you're interested in the statewide redistricting, which I don't think it impacts us on our next chapter of redistricting, any local, but it might be of interest to see what the, how the state redistricting plan is going, 1:30. And the other thing I want to say is that 4 o'clock this afternoon, same afternoon, there will be a groundbreaking at the old Henry's Building for the WSU Tech, what is that school we're doing?
Culinary.
Culinary. Thank you.
Downtown Culinary Building.
Downtown Culinary Building. And that's a big step forward, and that's taken a building that Mr. Papoon used to shop at every Christmas and look in the windows, and now it's going to be brought back to life. And so, anyway, that's going to be an incredible addition, again, to that block downtown. That's good. So that'll be at 4 o'clock this afternoon. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to remind everyone that the local consult with Secretary Lorenz will be here in town on September 9, out at the Hughes Metroplex, and that's going to kind of direct what our planning for of direct what our planning for transportation is going to have in the future. So it's an important meeting, but I do plan on attending. Thank you.
Okay. I don't see any other committee reports. Mr. Clerk, next item.
Other.
Is there anything other that the Commission wants to bring to our attention? I don't see any. I think we do have an executive session, so we will... Commissioner Cruz, please.
I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 30 minutes until 11:30 for consultation with an attorney regarding matters deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship in order to discuss pending litigation, and that the Board of County Commissioners return to this room from executive session at 11:30.
I'll second that. There's been a motion, and a second to recess to executive session. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Thank you. Yes, so we will exit to the boardroom, and so anybody can stay that wants to stay. Thank you.[672.93]
Hello everybody. We have, we've returned from executive session. No action is taken as a result of the executive session. So before we adjourn, I just want to congratulate Josh. Our first commission meeting where he's our Mr. Clerk. So Josh, welcome. You did a fine job today. And with that, I don't see any other business coming in front of the board, so we will adjourn. Thank you.
Mr. Coughlin?
Yes, Mr. Coughlin. Repeating Mr. Coughlin.